It's now 6:01 and we're going to start the November 3rd Board of Selectmen meeting. And Michael is, Todd is on his way, so I think we are going to go to first, if there's any public comments relative to any other topic. Okay, hearing none, then we're going to go with old business and we'll start with the CIP. So Paul, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I'm here as the Chair of the Planning Board, but also as the Chair of a Subcommittee of the Planning Board that has been meeting during the summer months and the early fall to once again address the issue of the Capital Improvement Program that we are charged with. We have done this in the past and did it this year by convening a Subcommittee that consisted of some members of the Planning Board and others as well, and I'll mention them in addition to myself, Paul Vance, Tim Paradies, Emily Campbell, and Adam Ricker was, were the members from the Planning Board, and then Lindsay Lunt from the Budget Committee. There was supposed to be someone else from one of the other committees, but that person never materialized. So those are the people that met regularly during the summer months, and what we did was, what we've been doing in the past, we met with some of the Directors of Committees, or rather, departments of the town. And so we, in particular, met with Jay Lyons from the Fire Department, we met with Bob Harrington from Public Works, we met from, with Crystal Scheinfitt for the Library, and we met with Emily Cobb from the Police Department. We also talked in person to some of the other committees that you have impaneled, for example, the committee that conserves property for, to achieve or maintain the rural quality of the town. So what I'd like to do this evening is briefly tell you what is in this report that I presume you have in front of you, and then I'd be happy to answer any que, well, I say I'd be happy to answer, I'll try to answer any questions that you might have. So with regard to that meeting with the Director of the Tracy Library, most of what we talked about were the questions which I'm sure you're probably familiar with, which has to do with problems that they're having with the facility, the physical plant. Their issues are not, in a way, related to the mission of a library, but they're related to the place where the library is housed. And so there are problems that they have, which you, I'm sure are familiar with, with the roof, with some of the heating systems, and so forth. So we discussed that with them, and the action that we recommended in the, in the actual plan for, for the Capital Improvement Program was to just, the town has traditionally given them, I think it's $35,000 annually for many, many years, and so we recommended that the town do that again. It's a contribution that the town makes to some significant physical plant problems that they have, and those need to be addressed so that the building doesn't implode. But any event, so that's, that was the thing that we spent most of our time talking about while we were there, and the outcome was that in this report, you'll see that we assigned that figure of $35,000 to the library. We also met with Public Works, and we had a long and very good meeting with them, and we were able to update our report in a variety of different ways from the last report as a result of some of the information that we received. For example, the ways in which the staff of Public Works has been, with a certain genius, able to recondition some of the, some of the equipment that they have, and in requests that we would have gotten a year ago now have been pushed out more years because they've been able to address them in a way that has maintained these pieces of equipment and given them a longer life, which, which is a good thing certainly. We also met then with, with the Fire Department and, and spent most of our time talking about the, the two issues that they confront. One, one being the issue of the way in which they titrate their purchase of equipment, and the fact that there is a major investment that's going to be made, not immediately, but out probably nine, eight or nine years from now. And, and in that, as I understand it, the equipment that they are needing to purchase, they don't make it in the size that we have it now. And what takes its place is a larger, longer piece of equipment that the Fire Department needs to be able to do its work. That then therefore is going to necessitate a review of the physical plant in the Fire Department, and the recommendation that we have made is that they look at a way in which one of the bays that they have in their building could be extended. It isn't an enormous extension that needs to be made, but nonetheless, this new piece of equipment is going to be significantly longer such that they, it won't fit in anything that we have in the way of a garage right at the moment, and so they're going to need to do something about that, and, and that's something that's going to need addressing. And then finally, we, we met with the Police Chief and talked with the, what has a bit of a feeling of a sort of a perennial issue, which is where are they going to live? And so we, what happened was that a year ago, we made recommendations through God to where the, what we believe to be a solution to the problem of, of a police station. In the meantime, lots of water has gone under the bridge and over the dam and so forth and so on, and so now that problem seems to be on the road to solution in the purchase of some, potential purchase of some property here in town, and on that, a new police station can be built, and we support that. So in a nutshell, that summarizes. The other thing that this chart shows you is the spread of some of these expenses out over, out over a number of years. And I was not planning on going into that in any great detail, but if there are questions that you have, I will try to answer them, which would really be answers that, you know, I've received from the department heads that we met with and talked with. So that's my report, and I'm happy to try and answer questions that you might have.
Okay, any questions, Janet or Bill?
I don't.
Bill?
So Paul, just to help me get through this sheet a little bit. On the library, you say that you recommend $35,000 a year contribution.
Right.
That's different than, I guess, what you've done for the other groups here, you've simply spread out their costs.
Yes.
Where, and I don't see in the text either that recommendation, so I'm wondering if you might amend your text to indicate that, because when I was looking at this, I saw $685,000, and I thought, whoa. But, and in no year is it come, it's always more, each year, as the spread shows, the likely cost is greater than $35,000. I think to make the report tie together, you need that, that $35,000 recommendation needs to be someplace?
Yes, and, and-
It's not in the text either, that's why.
Pardon?
It's not in your text either.
Yeah, okay. So we will make that correction and resubmit the text.
But that, so simply you didn't, you're not, you didn't comment on the validity of how they're going to spend it, it's just that you think the town ought to limit its contribution?
When, well, historically, we're dealing with a situation where the library has received from the town $35,000 a year.
Which is tended to cover whatever they were going to-
Whatever, and we, in a sense, we trusted them to spend that for, for physical plant issues.
Mm-hmm.
And as I'm sure you know, the physical plant issues that they're confronted with are significant, and in fact, you know, $35,000 isn't going to cover any one of those things, so it's, it's a contribution towards them being able to meet those, beginning to meet those needs and raise the money in other venues.
True, what you said, I was trying to make it tied to the reports.
Okay.
Historically, we know how we got where we go.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll address that in, in the report and correct that. Yeah.
Okay, any questions from the audience? Yes?
Just a point of representation. So the $35,000 for the library-
Thank you.
Sorry. So the difference that is, is expected to be made up in a different type of basis, is that one?
That's, that's what, that's what we've agreed to. The mean, that's what we're recommending to the town. It's just continuing a process that's been going on for years, that the town contributes $35,000, and we, we, the, the committee, we're not prepared to expend any more than that, or ask the town to expend any more than that.
Will?
No further questions?
I have another comment on this.
Okay.
Try that one. So, so Kim, could you help me now make sure I understand the Selectmen's role versus the Budget Committee and the Town Meeting's role? We really have, the Selectmen have no say in this, is that correct?
Well, first off, you have no say in the CIP. What we're talking about now is the CIP-
Right.
Which is not the Capital Reserve Funds.
And is a proposal.
That's not, this is not a-
No, I understand that.
Right, okay, so the Capital Reserve Fund and what the Planning Board recommends in the Capital Reserve, in the CIP to the Selectmen and Budget Committee is advisory.
Correct.
Then, when we get into the budget, it's the library trustees' role to submit the budget to the Selectmen.
Correct.
Which then goes to Town Meeting.
Well, goes to the Budget Committee.
It goes to the Selectmen and the Budget Committee. That budget goes to the-
But am I correct in saying the Selectmen have no authority over the library budget?
To cut it?
Yes.
Or add to it? Yeah, I would agree with that.
Yes, okay, that's what my question, okay.
Yeah.
So this is really-
You can not, you can decide not to recommend it, certainly.
Right.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Okay, I, thank you, Paul.
Okay.
We're all set.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, Michael? Our Town Moderator. Talk about the State General Election coming up next Tuesday.
Thank you, Nancy. I don't have any prepared statement, other than to say that we have our 50 volunteers scheduled to staff the various positions in the hall, thanks to Tina Helman, another great job pulling that together. I understand this is going to be the last time she will be doing that for us, but we have understudies in the mix to keep it going. There have been some reports on the news that certain advocacy groups are encouraging certain voters to mark their ballots in such a way that they must be hand counted. This could have a foreseeable effect in slowing the tally results. There's also been some rumblings about an increase in number of observers and challengers for various reasons to voters, and that is particularly troubling to us that want to see a smoothly run election, because the challenge process requires the preparation of an affidavit and an immediate ruling by a moderator. And all the time that process is occurring, the voter is standing in line, unable to vote. So it wouldn't take many of those folks to shut down the whole business. I plan to talk with the Secretary of State's office tomorrow on possible strategies for that, but I do expect to see more observers and challengers. I guess the topic of police coverage has already been discussed, I have nothing to add on that. I can't think of anything else. We've already checked-
Were you going to bring forward some new names for us to-
Yes, I believe I gave that-
It was John Cannon and-
It was John Cannon, former Selectman, and another individual was on an email memo, memo attached to an email that I sent you, do you remember? Martin Sheer, Sheerden? Shearren? Sheerden?
Mark Shearren? Is that what you're saying?
Nope.
No.
Martin is his first name. You don't have that email? Oh, sorry. And I can't, I don't know the individual. I know that he's a Democrat, that I do know. Cannon is undeclared, I believe. You need his exact name to approve his, yeah, all right, it's going to take some digging, but we can come up with that.
Well, perhaps we could look for the email. In the meantime, Michael, I know that there was a presentation on the 27th of September about the pole pad divi-
Yes.
System. What, what do you think is the future of that, or do you think that's something that will actually happen?
I think I wrote an email summarizing the findings-
Yeah.
From that meeting, and I think that it would definitely speed up the check-in process. It's also far more accurate. As you know, we have to reconcile four different numbers now, as proposed by the Secretary of State. We have to reconcile, we have to do a physical, physical ballot reconciliation.
Right.
We have to do a reconciliation of the votes cast, and we have to reconcile that to the check-in books. And now the fourth item is we have to reconcile overvotes, undervotes, for every race and every candidate on the ballots, and divide that by the number of races, and, and all those four numbers should be the same, roughly equivalent. Historically, the one that's been the least close to the other three has been the check-in table, which is the majority of the human beings making physical marks in the book, which becomes the record.
Human error, yeah.
Human error, and it's, it's amplified by the fact that we may have three or four different check-in books, depending on the size of the voter turnout, and we've switched from 12-hour shifts to the, from the ballot clerks back down to six, down to four, and down to three, because it's, it's a great deal of concentration going on. Well, yeah, that just multiplies the number of hands in the books, and you don't tally the books until the end of the day, and it's therefore impossible to figure out which, which person may have made the error. So what we've done in the past election is we've had a supervisor, not a supervisor, checklist, wrong word, a, an experienced poll worker going up and down the line and just kind of looking over the shoulders and, and reminding the ballot clerks to check their books, check their books, check their books. And in the primary election, that check-in number was off by one. All the other three numbers were exact, all the same. So we have made as many improvements as we can, but I think the poll books are going to, they're going to simplify that, and they're going to make it faster, and I think they're going to make it even more accurate.
So what's the process for this?
Apparently, we have to buy some physical tablets, and then it's a subscription service. You have to pay so much annually to be, to have the support staff available, they have to program things before every election, and then there's a fee for each election. So in those years where we have multiple elections, the fee will be, it's fixed, but it's per election, so we would have to budget it. The amount we have to pay them on a subscription basis would change each year, depending on how many elections we have.
So will you be getting that sorted out relative to what the potential costs of such a system would be for the Town of New London?
I guess I'm, what I'm hearing from you is you, you want to hear from me as-
But I'd like to hear more relative to, yeah.
Understood, understood, and at the present time, Nancy, I haven't had a chance to, you know, tabulate that. I guess I'm going to have to sit down with Will. We're going to have to sit down and, and make a little spreadsheet and try to project what we think it will cost for each year, in those years where we have two and three, and, and then none or one, because we will need it for the town election in any event.
Right. I think just going forward would be good to have that information, we should make that decision, because I think anything that could automate, it would be helpful.
I think it would be a tremendous help.
Okay.
That's the only thing I could, did I forget anything that you, anything else you want me to-
Have we-
I can answer Paul that question.
Yeah.
Oh.
Then thank you very much for your attention, and-
In terms of cost? Well, do we want to see if Kim has found the email yet?
Oh, yeah.
The gentleman's name?
It's Martin Shearren. S-H-E-R-I-N.
S-H-E-R-I-N, okay, that's it. I know it was something, I, like I said, I don't know him, so I couldn't really tell.
Okay, so John Cannon and Martin Shearren.
Those are the only two.
Okay.
And they've already been, they've already been scheduled. Tina's already scheduled them, so I said, you got to get to the Selectmen and get them appointed, which we will do, we'll get them sworn in.
Okay.
We're also putting teams together, other thing I wanted to mention was, notices have been posted that we'll begin processing absentee ballots at 9:00 AM instead of the customary 1:00 PM. If you want to change the time, you have to post notices in three places, that's been done. And then we will be assembling hand count teams to count those ballots that have been kicked out by the AccuVote machine. Recall that the programming on the AccuVote ballot counting device has been changed. If there's an overvote in any race, the ballot is kicked out, and it's put into a side pocket, and the statute requires us to count those manually once the polls close. Last election in the primary, we had roughly 17 of those ballots, and as for the ballots that were marked deliberately to force hand counting, I think we found one in the primary.
Okay, thank you. So I'll make a motion first, and then we'll hear from Will, but I'll make a motion that we accept Michael's recommendation of John Cannon and Martin Shearren to assist with the elections.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Thank you.
Will?
So the pole pads would include four pads, three for the check-in tables, one for the supervisors, and at a certain time, one of the ones from over here will go up on the stage so that we can do the absentee ballots, we don't have to do the running back and forth, we could just, it's an iPad, basically, on a stand. $8,300 is the upfront equipment cost and one-time programming fee.
Total? $8,300?
Yeah, $8,300, and then there's a yearly cost of 300 per pole pad, so we're guaranteed $1,200 a year, and then it's $300 per election, maximum of four elections in a year. And so if you take that $2,400 and add it to the $8,300, that's the $10,700 that you see in the budget, so it's the high of what it could be. And there's also, in, in the upfront cost, there's a little bit of extra money for internet in here, because one of the problems about this room is we still don't have dedicated, secure internet for this room.
Right.
And that's something that we badly need here, because all this needs that too. So we're kind of working off of a not-so-great solution at the moment, using rec departments. So one, I don't know how we would figure that out and whose budget, but I've got a little bit of money in, to go towards that part of it as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Any further questions for Michael, or, did Michael disappear? Oh, he's there. Any further questions? Okay, thank you, Michael. Thank you, Will. Next on old business is bonded debt. Want to go through that?
Everybody knows where that is on your budget. We start on page, debt service starts on page 16. So obviously, these are the commitments that we already have.
Yep.
So unless we want to default on our debts, I wouldn't recommend any changes to any of those.
Right. The only one that I did add, and I don't even know if I spelt it right, sorry, that last line item.
Need to speak, and I'd like to-
Oh, sorry. There we go. I did add the purchase of the Beulah property into the last line item there. I don't know if I spelt it right, I think I did. And that would, that would be at current rates, which are quite a bit higher than they've been, and I did a 15-year bond. So that's an, it's an estimate, obviously, but when we go out for the money, we'd have the exact numbers. And then I also added that down under debt service interest.
So Lynn, it's my understanding that traditionally, we only pay interest in the first year on a new debt?
Depends on the timing of when you pull the bond. You could end up paying a principal within the first year.
All right, but it seems to me these numbers are higher, the, the principal number is a lot higher than one might expect, both in terms of thinking about the timing within the first year, and, and also, it seems to me, a 15-year note on a permanent building is relatively short-term.
It is.
So we're looking, we're looking for every penny this year, so-
I understand, but they also, the bank that I, I asked for, for quotes from didn't, don't, they don't do a 20. The other option that we can do is a bond anticipation loan, which would give us the funds for 90 days, so that I could go out to the bond bank, which would, for $600,000, it's not really cost-effective to go to the bond bank, but we'll have $600,000 from this building, we'll have $600,000 from the Beulah property. So there will be, once you're over a million, it's cost-effective to hit the bond bank, so that number could go down, and, but I don't know their, I won't know their rates until well into the spring.
I'm, I'm just thinking, as we get farther into wrapping this up, that this number seems to me to be on the high side for, both because the term is too short and because it anticipates paying principal in the first year.
Mm-hmm.
And is the $600,000 for Whipple in the 23 budget?
It is, that's, and that's in there.
So that was in the 23 budget?
It was in the 23 budget.
Even though we haven't yet actually raised that money?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions?
And then, if none, then we go into the Capital Reserve.
Yep.
So we start with outlays, and those are the items that have been requested to, vehicles and equipment to purchase. You'll see, well, it starts on the bottom of page-
Page 18.
Yeah, it starts on 17, the title, but, yeah, so 18, so you'll see the fire truck payment. And again, these, these are using the town's Capital Reserve Fund, so it's not raising taxes, these are already in the accounts. We have the Highway Department dump truck and sander, and the transfer station refuse So that's the vehicles and outlay of vehicles machinery. Then we go down to town buildings maintenance. What's the 82 for?
A roof.
Yeah, that shouldn't be in there. Don't forget, the town buildings maintenance is, we have agents to expend, so we put that money in, just so you know that something's coming out, it really won't be on the warrant. Library repairs, they've asked $85,000 for kitchen?
No, $85,000 is for, wait, wait for it. Flooring and kitchen and baths, yeah.
But now we're into the question I was trying to raise with Paul, and I realize that he was the wrong person to ask. But we, we are putting $85,000 in here, and-
No, these are, we're still talking about outlays. We're not, we're not talking-
I realize we're talking about outlays, but where are they getting the money from to, where's the money for the $85,000 coming?
They have a Capital Reserve Fund.
Right.
And they, they're requesting to take $85,000 out of it. All, all of these on this page that we're talking about, these requests for purchases, are requested to come out of existing Capital Reserve Funds.
So let me look at Lynn's cheat sheet here.
Second page.
Second page, thank you.
At the bottom.
So you're showing actually a slightly different number, right? You said $75,000 versus this $85,000.
No, that's, 75 is what they requested we put in.
That's a little confusing. We put money in every year, and sometimes we take money out.
Yeah, okay, I'm just, we've just got this piece of paper.
And the two, $35,000 and $50,000 in parentheses is what they're asking to take out.
Got it, got it, got it, thank you. Now, maybe I don't, but you show us putting $75,000 in every year into the future.
Right, right, that's-
So that's, I guess that's why-
We're not worried really about the future. We put those as sort of placeholders, I suppose. So what they're requesting this year, they didn't request 75 for the future, we put that in sort of so that you can see the future, what it might be, but this year, they're asking for 75.
For 35, 75.
They're asking for 75. They have in the past asked for 35, so it is a change.
But the recommendation- But the recommendation in the non-binding CIP was thirty-five, right? Am I tying all these together now?
Could be, could be, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So then we go down to gravel roads upgrades paving, one hundred and seventy-four thousand five hundred. Then we're done with the outlays, then we talk about transfers to capital reserves. And so Lynn has worked hard today on looking at various funding scenarios. She, we have one sheet that speaks, that puts in the amounts that have been requested. Then she did a sheet that talks about fifty percent, reducing all transfers to capital reserves by fifty percent. And then Lynn and I took a look at it today and changed, or will recommend some changes. Some we do not believe should be reduced by fifty percent, and some might be able to go a little bit more than fifty percent. So given that it's Lynn's form, I'll let her go through it.
Okay. Where do you want to start?
Which one do you want to do?
How much level of detail?
Do you want?
We can go through, first, I guess maybe it would be a good idea just to go through what it would be at full funding.
Sure, just so we have the dollar amount.
Right. So basically, just for sort of a summary, what is, what has been requested is one million seventeen thousand five hundred and ten.
Yeah.
If we reduce, obviously by fifty percent, we would go down to five hundred eight thousand seven fifty-five. Lynn and I found an additional twenty-seven thousand five hundred that you could consider, but it also includes increasing some others that Lynn will tell you about.
So you want me to start? Where do you want to start?
The fully funded?
Fully funded, yeah.
All right. So fully funding, we do town building maintenance would be fifty thousand dollars. Computer maintenance replacement is twenty-four thousand. Master plan update is not contributed. Energy products is thirty thousand. Records management system is ten thousand. Fire vehicle fund is two hundred and ten thousand. Town vehicle, town vehicle and equipment repair fund is ten thousand. Fire breathing apparatus is ten thousand. Fire department radio replacement is fifteen thousand. Communications equipment would be thirty-four thousand. Police equipment is ten thousand. Sidewalks is thirty thousand. Highway heavy equipment is three hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred and ten dollars. Gravel road paving is a hundred thousand. And sewer department would do twenty thousand. Conservation land acquisition and improvement is fifty thousand. And library building maintenance, seventy-five thousand. That's at the hundred percent of requested.
Right, which is the one million seventeen...
This is the one million seventeen five ten. So then if we back it all down to fifty percent, you want me to run through those numbers too real quick?
Well, I think...
Or can we?
I think it's pretty...
Do the math?
Do the math.
So I'll jump over to the...
I think it would be the fifty percent with the additional changes.
Sure. So the ones that we did not bump down to fifty percent, town building maintenance, that seems to be one that we are hitting a lot, so we put that at a hundred thousand. All right, so in that one, we not only don't think we should go down fifty percent, we think we should increase it. The fire roof is expected to be much more than we originally anticipated, so we will be in the red if we were to go down to fifty percent. And I think having, having the fund at zero or close to it really isn't what we, wouldn't be prudent. If we put a hundred thousand dollars in there and we do the academy building roof for eighty-two thousand, that'll leave us about twenty-five thousand.
Right, so you're actually recommending doubling it?
Yes.
At the hundred thousand?
Yep.
Okay.
Where are we now? Sorry, I lost my notes on which ones we did not go down to fifty percent.
Let's see.
Let's see. I apologize. I think we decided we could go zero with records management system because we're just going to start that project, so I think
Right.
We can lose five thousand there. We, radio, fire department radios, we're going to be in the red, so we believe that we should fully fund that at fifteen thousand. Sidewalks, we can recommend, you could go zero on that. We do have funds in the, what do we call that, the highway enhancement? The municipal and regional transportation improvement fund. And that's funded through taxes. If we decided to do some sidewalks, but we thought one year of no funding there. I will say with the, on the topic of sidewalks, after Halloween, I got some citizens who continue to want more sidewalks, so I don't, I don't think that we should think about abandoning putting money into sidewalks. And in fact, we do have money for sidewalks, but that could be an area for some savings this, this year. We also, you might want to consider the gravel road paving. We do have the additional hundred thousand dollars from the state that the state shared with us this year, so we could use those funds in that area. Obviously, gravel roads repaving is pretty popular and we do want to continue to fund them.
Yep, anything else?
Nope, that's it. And that puts us, you know, at a four eighty-one five on contribution, so it, it does take us down a little further than that fifty percent mark in total. I think we could, I mean, we can purchase the things that departments feel they need, but we'll have to remember that if this is done, obviously, next year will require higher than, than normal deposits if we're going to catch up.
But as I said last week, you know, I think rather than assuming we're just going to continue with the existing system, that we should take a pause after we get through town meeting and rethink, or reconfirm that we like what we're doing, or take a different cut at it, because I think there are a number of things we could do that are a little different that might put us in a better place in the long term. But I think right now, we should be focusing on twenty-four, and then after the town meeting, if everybody agrees, we would work with the budget committee to take a whole look at this issue of capital expenditures.
Right, what's your reaction, though, to the fifty percent with the proposed changes? Sort of that third?
Well, I proposed that last week, so I'm...
No, but with the proposed changes?
With change, oh, fine. I mean, I think that was the point of just sort of getting the conversation going, and I assumed that others would take a closer look at individual accounts. My purpose last week, Nancy, was just to
Yep.
Get the idea on the table.
Yep. Well, I think the things certainly that have been recommended to not go to fifty percent are prudent, so, because I was concerned about some of the items. Janet, any comments relative to that?
I guess I did think about what John suggested with regard to zeroing out the capital reserve fund contributions this year, but I think that that puts us in a really difficult position for the 2025 budget and going forward. So I'm much more comfortable with the recommendations that Lynn and Kim made with regard to the fifty percent. So that would be my...
Fifty percent with the changes, though?
Fifty percent of the changes, correct.
Okay.
I guess the only other thing is I'm still uncomfortable with the whole library discussion. Back when Crystal was here, I raised the question about whether we might be provided with a little bit of history about what's been done with this building and where we're going with it and so on, because I think it'd be useful to better understand why we are where we are and where the estimates are coming from and so on, because I think this is not an area that I believe that the building and facilities committee got into very deeply, and I don't think the library trustees probably have on them, on their board.
No.
The expertise to do this. So I think we accept what's here now, but I think that will be an important part of looking forward in other years as to what's being done there, why it's being done, what it's costing, and so on.
Right, and to have a prudent schedule as to, you know, as we go forward around major projects. It has been a money pit. Okay, any final comments relative to the capital reserve funds? Any questions from Joe?
I'm on. Joe Cardillo, Budget Committee. I know Bill made an effort to do some creative financing and maybe find a way in the reserve funds. The thought just crossed my mind, I know there's restrictions with ARPA funds. I don't know how much of that we've expended. The water precinct's getting some money. Apparently, we're giving some, I don't know how much of that is left, and if the restrictions prohibit us from directing some of those funds to some of these projects, we have to do the roof on the firehouse, we've got to fund that. We don't have enough in there. But are we able to redirect some of those?
I don't think to a roof. I can run it by council, but I don't think roofs and building maintenance, I don't think so. I can check, but I don't think so.
I know there's specific parameters, right?
Yeah.
And I'm not sure what they are.
The selectmen have committed twenty-five percent to water, twenty-five percent to sewer.
What was the total amount?
Four hundred and twelve?
So we've, we've committed about a couple hundred thousand.
Fifty percent.
So there's a couple hundred thousand dollars still kicking around.
Correct.
If that helps us in this difficult time, you know, as interest rates are up, if we can direct it, if there's a creative way to direct it,
Yep.
I would suggest we look at, go down that path.
We definitely couldn't put it into capital reserve funds, and that's not what you're saying.
No, it's not what I'm saying.
Yeah.
But we are putting things into capital reserve funds because we know we've got projects that are ready to be, you know, dealt with. And I know that the conversation's going to come up about our new creative way we're paying for the fire trucks, so we've got to figure that out as well. So, thanks.
You're out? We're hoping to have our new chargeable mics soon.
Thanks, Will. All right, so should we start going through?
I think there's a question.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Now it's on?
Yep.
My name is Steve Solomon. I'm a trustee of the library, and I'm on the facilities committee. And I wanted, unfortunately, I was misinformed about when we would be on tonight, so I came a little late. So excuse me if I don't, I'm not quite up to date. But I was in a meeting in the summer with the budget committee and went over our capital expenditure plan for the next few years, which is based on some surveys we had done of the building, particularly the roof. So we know that in the next five to seven years, there's going to be a major cost of replacing a section of the roof. And if any of you live in an older house, just take your problems and sort of expand them, because that's what we have. We have an old building that's been added on to over the years, so it's going to have continuing maintenance. It's just one of the things that's a fact of life in this, in this structure. So we were advised by the, by the budget committee that we should put a certain amount of money into our capital planning so that at the end of this four, five- to seven-year period, we'll have enough money for the roof, instead of waiting until a year or two before and asking for a huge amount of money. So that, so the money that we were asking for, or were proposing in this particular budget, is a step in that direction. So, so that in, we will have at the end of this sort of sinking period, you might call it, enough money presumably to fund the cost of a roof we know we're going to have to pay for. Now, we're going to be, we update these studies over, over time because costs go up and, and we're hoping not to have any further deterioration, but we want to keep on top of this, so that we might amend our proposals from year to year, but we know we have these costs coming up. Now, so that means, as a practical matter, if we reduce the contribution in this coming year, it doesn't mean we're going to be reducing the cost in the future. We're going to have to pay that cost one way or the other. So it's a question of planning as to whether we put some aside now or we wait until the future, and then we'd have to put more aside. And we are in the process of doing a complete architectural, engineering evaluation of the systems, the structure of the building, so that we know going forward what sort of things we're going to need and presumably what they're going to cost. So that process is underway now, and our proposal for next year is based on what we know at this time. And I think most of what we're looking at is the roof that we know is aging in some places, and obviously, we have to take care of it, or there's a structural problem and a lot of damage can be done to the library. So I just want you to know that we are sensitive to what you're thinking, but we are, and we are responding in the way that it was suggested to us to respond by the budget committee. So that's basically all I wanted to say, but if you have any questions, you know, I'd be glad to try to answer them for you.
Who's doing this study?
It's a company, the name of which I haven't written down, but it's a company that specializes in doing evaluations of structural integrity and systems of different buildings. Somebody's been business for a long time.
So you've contracted with them to do this?
Yes. And they're in the process of doing the review, and I'm not sure when their report will come out. So sometime in the next few months, I imagine, we'll get a better handle on where we're going with that.
Steve, for this year, though, you were talking about the kitchen, renovating the kitchen and flooring and that sort of thing. And I guess my question would be, how crucial is a kitchen remodel at this time?
Obviously, it's something that can be postponed. It's not, it's not, it doesn't have the same significance to the structure and functioning of the building that the roof would, for example.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
All right. Should we start going through the budget pages?
Well, Nancy, I would like to suggest that there's two other major expenditures that are not yet in the budget, and that we ought to talk about those.
One is the COLA.
One is wages.
Yep.
And whatever that might look like. And I think it has a couple of parts to it. It's not only COLA or some form of COLA, but also what comes out of the wage study will also potentially cause some change in the wages. So that's, that's the huge one. And so if we add, if we're looking, trying to figure out where we, where we're starting from, you know, I think that's a couple hundred thousand dollars of placeholder right now. And the other one, and I told Bob Harrington I was going to raise this tonight, so I bet he's ready to answer it, is what we're, where we stand in terms of increased tipping fees for our waste. And Bob, do you have some better idea of what that might be? Because I think it's good to know what we're starting with before we start to go through it page by page.
So what we have for a budget price right now is they're telling us that it's going to increase to sixty-seven dollars a ton, which is approximately nineteen dollars more per ton than what we're paying. I dug back to try to figure out how long we've been at this forty-eight dollars per ton. I got all the way back to 2014, so there has been no major increase since going there. Our tonnage going from 2018 to 2021 has been, let's see, 2018 was twenty-two hundred tons, 2019 was twenty-two hundred as well, give or take. For some reason, it dropped in 2020 to nineteen hundred. Then it went back up 2021 to twenty-three hundred. to 2,300, and this year, we're looking at about 22 to 2,300. My concern is, with the developments in town, we are going to see an increase on that as well. Basically, we're looking at about $42,000 increase in the budget.
Also...
Yep.
Is that for, for which line, Lynn?
Sorry, Lynn, what line does that, so we adjust that line, and then Nancy, I think, then we can go through the rest of our meeting.
There's 120,000 in that line.
Okay, so 120 is going up to 162?
Yeah, 162, about.
How much, how much did you say would increase?
I got it figured out at about 155.
155.
I think that's what I...
Thirty-five thousand more. Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, thanks, folks.
Thank you.
So, the wage study, where are we with that? What's the status?
We have not gone out for the wage study yet. We had decided to go out in the spring.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. So depending on, if we say we go out in the spring, I suppose we could have answers probably June to August. Those would be recommendations, sort of the same timing as the last time we did it.
Right.
When, over the summer, you looked at the results and decided where to make changes. At that time, you put in $100,000 placeholder and then phased in the changes.
Right. So we're talking the next budget cycle.
No, it's going to impact in '24.
Well...
Yeah, that's the next...
That is the, that's the budget cycle we're talking about, yeah.
I know.
Right. Yeah, not the current budget. Yeah, next budget.
And is that what was really the impact the last time?
Yeah, as I recall, we were pretty far off the last time. The $100,000 wasn't enough, and we had to do it over a couple of years to get through.
Right. But we were starting from a very different standpoint.
Correct. I suspect, I mean, in this job market, I mean, I'm hearing places that are hiring dishwashers for $25 an hour. I mean, it's, it's a pretty challenging market at the moment.
All right. Well, so in the interest of time, why don't we start going through the rest of the budget, recognizing that the wages and the COLA are still hanging there?
Right.
All right, so I'll do these by categories. So we'll start with general government, if there's anything there that anybody would like to bring up, question?
I would like to take the wage salary study out of '24 budget and have it conducted in '23. Last item under executive.
Yep. So the 15 would come out for '24?
Yes, yes.
No.
Okay. So why don't we go on to the next section? Town clerk and elections. Okay, not hearing anything. I'm going to keep moving. Finance, general government, which includes tax collector. Brings us to page three.
I do have a question about computer support. It went up almost 13%. Is that, why is that? That seems a little high.
Talking about under finance. Yep.
Yeah. All of our computer stuff has gone up, and we also re-categorized some things, but that's, that's what VC3 has given us for what the costs are going to be.
Okay. Moving forward, general government, assessor services. Okay, legal. You certainly have a number of things in the harper.
I'd still like to take that back to 10,000 and just ride with the ups and downs rather than trying to guess which year it's going to go up and which year it's going to go down.
Okay, I'd support that.
So it's 10,000 instead of 15?
Yep. Okay, general government, personnel. Is this our best guess scenario at this point in terms of insurance?
All the, yeah, the, all the insurances have been updated.
Okay.
Actually, they don't have a new worksheet, do they?
The what?
They don't have a new worksheet. They don't have line items showing that, but in the comparison, it's...
Comparison of numbers.
Okay. All right. Okay, planning board. And then planning administrator, over to zoning board of adjustments, that whole piece.
I'd like us to reduce the Whipple Town Hall maintenance and repair. We talked about this several weeks ago, that much of what has been, been done there is now being done through the $600,000, and I think we can comfortably take that down to 5,000 as our ongoing number.
So the 10 down to 5?
Yes.
Okay, the academy building. Anything else left in those lines until we get down to the end with Elkins Post Office? Okay, moving on. Cemeteries. Not much to change in there. Okay, insurance, not otherwise allocated. Not much there. Advertising and regional associations.
I'd like to suggest that we leave the chamber where it's been for several years and not have them increase this year.
Right. And now we have the police.
So the chief suggested that we could do the pistol project over two years, and I think we should accept that suggestion on her part to get it started, but only do the first year of it this year and the second year in '25.
Sure.
It's hard to be sneaky in those.
Yeah. Exactly nimble in this. So based on some of the feedback that I had heard at the last meeting, we reworked the numbers. I worked closely with Jeff Daly, who's our firearms instructor. We got some updated numbers on things, and I decreased some of the pistols that we were requesting. So at this point, I'd like to request $14,000 less because we'll be getting two fewer duty pistols, and I would only issue the off-duty pistols to our full-time members. So it would be a decrease of 14,000 for that line item.
But that would get all the pistols in the first year?
It would get all of them this year. Yes, sir. So that line item of general equipment would go from 65 to 51.
I'm okay with that, Nancy.
Yep, 51. Yep, sir.
I agree. Anything else?
Thank you, chief.
Okay, thank you. Okay, fire department. Do you have a comment?
Yeah.
Sure.
Um...
Do you want to come to the microphone, please?
When our subcommittee talked with the chief, we talked about putting off the pistols for a year. We also talked about putting off the, the new car, the chief's car, for a year, because it has 70,000 miles on it this year.
The new cruiser.
Right.
Chief?
Sorry. That was something that was discussed or brought up, is it a possibility? But at this point this year, I don't feel that we should put off the pistols another year, nor do I feel that we should put off a police cruiser for another year, because it's going to just put us that much further behind. The, there's a pretty important part in the Dodge Durango. I don't have that car currently. The power distribution box needs to be replaced to the tune of about $1,300. So I think that if we continue to hold on to the vehicles that are getting up there in mileage and in age, we're going to start seeing increased maintenance costs, and the value of a trade-in would go down as well significantly if we continue to hold on to them. So while it was discussed certainly at the subcommittee meeting, I just don't feel that these are things that we should put off any longer.
And are we in the process of purchase? And, I mean, because I know that in the past, some of our vehicles have taken a long period of time to acquire.
Right, right. So we aren't at this point, because in the past, when March Town Meeting has gone and a budget's been approved, we would call the dealership and say, you know, we were in the market, and we'll be able to pay for it July 1, and they've been okay with that.
Okay.
I don't know if that's going to be the same story this year. For, for some of the makes and models, there's a, some of them have like a 24-hour window of purchase. So you have to be kind of already on the list of a dealership to get that cruiser through. So I'm not really sure what it's going to look like next year.
Yeah. I'm wondering if you have to prepay anything as well, just like you do with private vehicles.
Just, just for this part, they required a 50% deposit of the total cost of this before they would even order the part. I said, well, we're a municipality, you know, we're good for it, but nope, they required a check before they'd even order the part for it.
Great. Okay, thank you, chief. Any further comment, Janet or Phil?
I agree with the chief that we should keep the schedule for replacing cruisers.
Okay. So we're at the fire department? Any comment on that? Word of fireworks, I see that's gone up. No, only kidding. Emergency management? If I don't hear anything, I'm just going to keep moving here. Dispatch. Can I just ask my ongoing question of where we are with the sonopie and the repeaters? Are we all in good shape with the current equipment and...
You mean for Phase 3?
Yeah.
Yes. So that information for the equipment that's needed was just forwarded to the Division for Natural and Cultural Resources earlier this week. There's some other studies that need to be done, as I understand, an intermodulation study and a structural analysis. And then we apply for the FCC license, and after all of those things are done, then we apply to the Division of Natural Cultural Resources to request to be put on the tower. And once that is completed, we would be able to order the equipment and place it on there. So it is all still in process, but not without its difficulties and...
Hurdles.
Hurdles.
Hurdles, right.
Mm-hmm.
So we're at least a year out, if not more.
I wouldn't anticipate we'd be able to do that work this year, especially with winter coming at this point. And the equipment that we'd have to order, I don't know when that would...
Exactly.
Right, arrive, so. The portables we ordered in June just arrived in late September, maybe. So it's, it's an ongoing thing, and I check in about once every couple, three weeks, just to see. But again, there was a lot of movement at the grants office, so I had to just keep being the squeaky wheel.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so nothing else on dispatch. Highway department.
Let me do highway and streets as part of that.
Sure.
Next page, page...
Yep.
Well, I'd like to suggest...
Highway department.
I'd like to suggest that we zero out the, or down to $1, whatever we want to do, the dirt roads item and the calcium item. There have been, sort of, Bob said in the discussions we had earlier, that those were really at places they kept there in case one thing ran over or under and so on, and I think for this year, we need to tighten that up and take that $20,000 out.
So we're talking about the line that says upgrading dirt roads with the 10,000?
Right. The one that has had no expenditures for recent years.
Yep, and then the next one?
And third, third one up from the bottom, calcium chloride.
Yep.
Where there's been no expenditure for a couple of years. And I understand the rationale for having those numbers there, but it seems to me as we tighten up a bit, we should take those out.
Certainly for this, this year anyways, for this budget cycle. Okay. Janet, anything you have?
Yeah, Bob wants to...
Bob?
Hi, Bob.
I'm willing to cut on the gravel. I don't think it's a good idea to zero completely out. As far as calcium chloride, the price of that has increased significantly, and we have none at this point. And one trailer load is probably going to be just around 11 grand. So I'm already taking a hit on that. Just some, something to think about. All right, thank you.
Bob, Bob, you just said gravel, and we were talking about the...
The dirt roads.
Dirt roads, not the gravel.
So the gravel remains.
We're not talking about gravel, sand, or salt.
Yes, that's used to, usually what we do is go in and upgrade anything that's going to get paved.
Right. But you haven't used that. I mean, when you were talking to us a couple of weeks ago, you explained the reason those numbers were zero was because you, you're not sure which bucket you put it in sometimes.
Usually, I try to use it, but we were ahead on roads enough. We are ahead on the current road that we're looking at doing, which is Forest Acres. There are spots out there that we'd have to add material. In a few places, there may be some drainage, rock, riprap, to assist with erosion control. We have done quite a bit out there, working with the Protective Association from Mesa Pond.
So on the calcium, when you get this load in now, as you say, you're going to take a hit this year. Will you be replenishing that again next year?
We will be getting it again this year.
Okay, so I guess that one I can back off on. But I'd still like to take 10,000 from somewhere.
I would actually feel more comfortable not being able to upgrade a dirt road than... I would actually feel more comfortable not being able to upgrade a dirt road than I would be with the calcium because that actually holds the material on the dirt roads.
So let's take ten thousand out of dirt roads, is that on it?
Upgrading dirt roads.
Upgrading dirt roads, number two, second one down.
Okay, street lighting. Transfer station?
That's where we've just got the additional thirty-five thousand dollars put in.
Was it thirty-five or was it forty?
I thought it went from one, I thought it was one twenty to one fifty-five.
Forty-two.
Forty-two?
Yeah, I thought it was forty-two.
Oops, sorry. One sixty-two then. So additional forty-two thousand dollars, which is, I guess, under the waste disposal line. Gulp.
All right. Transfer, solid waste cleanup, transfer station. Okay, health and welfare. Intergovernmental Welfare CAP program. Health and welfare vendor payments. And now we're down to parks and rec.
We don't have any say in that number.
Patriotic purposes, that's kind of moot point here. General Government. Okay, Energy Committee, going down through General Government, the conservation mill foil.
Wasn't clear to me in the presentations. I think somebody was going to get back to us with why there was an increase with the Big Lake.
Yes, the Big Lake increased and the question was, well, two, two Protective Associations increased, two increased last year and two this year. They're experiencing higher costs with staff to monitor the boat ramps. The Big Lake, the question was, how do they come up with their fees? And she said that it's based on the assessed valuation of the waterfront.
We'll come in.
Okay, and then there's the whole bonded debt principle. Nothing on page sixteen or seventeen. And then the capital outlays?
I don't see any sense in postponing any of those. Those we've already?
Committed to.
Appropriated that money and the cost of doing those projects is not going to go down.
Right.
I think we should proceed with those projects.
Okay, capital outlay buildings. Yep. Down through General Government. Okay, transfers to Capital Reserve?
We talked about that, Lynn gave us a new number of four hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars.
What we can do is update all these sheets for, you know, the changes. We can go back over them again.
Yep.
Perhaps when you set the tax rate, hopefully next week, make sure all the numbers come
So certainly no changes to our sewer.
The Sewer Department is doing a great job as far as fixing leaks and getting our percentage that we send to Sunapee down. That saves us quite a bit.
So Nancy and Janet, I was, did a little, my own little numbers going along here before I came and little changes here. If we assume two hundred thousand dollar placeholder for wages, did that just a round number, the changes we've just talked about will result in a increase in bottom line of about two and a half percent. See what it really is when Lynn runs them.
Yeah, I think we need to do?
Yeah, but I'm just saying that, that to me is not an unreasonable place to be, all things considered.
Understood, understood. Okay, so I think we've gone as far as we can for the budget relative to this evening. Okay, under new business then, discuss the conceptual plan for the police station on County Road. Kim, do you want to?
Maybe the chief will want to speak to it.
The chief?
Or the Suckman. So this is just the first sort of blush at the, what could, what the property could look like with a ten thousand square foot police station. I think there's a lot to talk about as far as turning the building for views and sights from the road. We, Bill and I met with the Energy Committee last night and there was some discussion about solar, so those things would have to be taken into consideration. But this sort of gives an idea, or at least to show that, yes, this facility could be on that property. And for everybody out there, we're talking about behind the gallery where the old Beulie House was, on the entrance would be from County Road.
If I can blow it up a little bit. That helps.
It does work for a few seconds.
So my reaction to this is we're very fortunate that the engineers turned this around so quickly so that we have something concrete to talk about in addition to all the things you just said, Kim. I think, you know, somehow reducing the mass of the building and the mass of the parking would be important. But the Energy Committee last night was very encouraging Nancy and Janet in terms of thinking this was an excellent site and that there are a lot of very positive things that could be done energy-wise, including contributing, using this project to contribute to the meeting, the goal of getting a hundred percent of renewable energy by 2030, which might reduce our electricity costs by another fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars a year. So that would be a very nice sort of side benefit of this. But I think that they, I think the only thing to say is they were very, very encouraged about all sorts of things that they could do from electric vehicle pump stations to the HVA systems and so on. So they seem to be enthusiastic and in fact already want to come out and do some work on the site also, so.
I think it's a great starting point, a great way to start the conversation. And now, like was mentioned, just discussion about orientation of the building and the things that are already on here. So I think it's a great starting off point. So next steps.
Taking questions?
Yes.
Joe Cardillo, member of the former disbanded Building and Facilities Committee and also a member of the Subcommittee, of the disbanded Subcommittee for Site Selection for police, for a new police station. As a member of that committee, we spent weeks, months, representatives and planning board, spearheaded by the chief and lieutenant, and went through numerous sites in town. And, you know, our concern was knowing that it was a priority, it seems like, for a significant number of people that we have a new police station, that we make every effort to find a location that checked off a number of different boxes and most importantly, to listen to what was important to the police. And going through the exercises we went through, from ninety sites to seventy sites, down to seven, we continued to eliminate sites at the request of the police, Chief Cobb and Lieutenant Keith, that exited or entered into residential areas, specifically County Road and others. Now, this section of the Beulie land, I understand, is part of a bigger parcel, but it seemed, or I won't say it seemed like, it was clearly stated that there was little interest on the County Road part of the Beulie acquisition and significant and major interest in the Newport Road parcel of this land, simply because it exited and entered onto Newport Road. We were given pretty clear guidance by the police that their priority was to exit and enter onto Main Street or onto Newport Road. And we took that into consideration because we wanted to make every effort to put it in front of the town and have that conversation, that we wanted to meet every requirement that the police had asked for. And now we are, it seems like we're focused on a site that didn't, didn't fit the bill some months ago. I'm wondering where along the line the conversation changed and we're now comfortable with exiting onto County Road.
I had heard this as a concern already, as the Newport Road piece versus the County Road piece. And so my recollection is, and it's reflected in the minutes, I went back and checked them, is that the County Road pieces weren't for sale at the time. And as a matter of fact, the seller at the time, again, this was early this year, was interested in annexing a piece of the seven acre lot on Newport Road to keep for the County Road lots. So that was the driving factor behind the lack of interest in County Road is that it wasn't for sale at the time. Some of the feedback and some of the things that we discussed in terms of the main corridor, that was a big topic of discussion. And Newport Road is, we talked about that being right off of the main corridor. So the driving factor, to my memory and recollection, Joe, was that this wasn't for sale at the time and we needed to eliminate properties. And that was the reason why, is that it wasn't for sale at the time.
I also noticed on this diagram, probably can't see it as well up there, but in the microscopic view here, there is language about potential emergency access drive onto Newport Road. I'm assuming that's on the side of the shopping or whatever that mall area is called?
Gallery.
Yeah, the gallery.
Is that reference to the easement?
Yes, the easement down by the salon.
Yep. That could potentially be considered. I'm just pointing it out.
Yes, sure. Yep. Sorry, I didn't know there was a question there.
It's not a question, it's really a comment.
Sure.
Relative to this.
But Chief, you're correct. I also looked and in the three minutes from the Subcommittee's meetings in January, what you said about the availability of it and the interest that is accurate.
And this is clearly not a debate of any, of any sort. It's just, we want to make sure that we don't go down the same path we've gone down over and over and over again. And that's not, you know, when we go in front of the voters, we want to make sure we have a thorough and fully vetted project that they can hang their hats on. And these questions will come up at town meeting. That land was always available. It was, at that time, it was an additional cost. We were talking about five hundred thousand dollars. We weren't interested in that. So now everything is being sold for six hundred thousand, so it's there. It was always available. It was discussed. I'm glad I'm speaking into the microphone and there's people watching this on YouTube at some point in time because minutes don't always reflect, or have not always reflected, the total of conversations. But if we do go back to those minutes and you look carefully, we discounted even a portion of the crescenti land because it exited on County Road. We looked at one point to find out if the land up by Tommy DiPaolo's was available and we discounted that because it exited on County Road. I don't really, I'm not a member of the Police Department. I don't know what's good or bad as far as access and egress, but, so if this is the site we're going to put in front of the town, I think we need to be prepared to say, to answer those questions because it's, they're going to continue to come up on why County Road is okay now, which leads to part two. Have we totally eliminated the Newport Road location? Has that been taken off the list?
Not entirely.
And are we, are we thoroughly investigating that and doing studies on that, on wetlands remediation? Certainly the visibility, I mean, again, some of the things we talked about were how do we keep a small town, you know, feeling like a small town? We have great visibility of a fire station coming down our Main Street. Where will we have visibility? And we talked about on Newport Road, there would still be visibility sitting up on that hill. It would deter people coming into town, knowing that the police station was right there. We were going to gain some visibility and also the access onto a state road. So I guess the question is, why aren't we exploring that parcel as well? And you're talking about emergency access, and this is Jones and Beach that did this?
Yeah.
These drawings? Aren't they the same engineers who have been working with the sellers all this time?
Yes.
Okay, so it was low hanging fruit. We know that they're familiar with the land, so it was easy. And is there an access to Newport Road out the back? Or does it have to land on the private road to Hilltop?
No, it looks, well, it appears that it fits.
I think it's important to note, this is the first pass.
Right.
Very preliminary.
And so it begs the question, is it important to have access out to Newport Road out the back way?
Well, it's a possibility. I guess that's the important piece. So if we determine that that's a must, then we need to investigate that first.
So the first pass is good. I mean, that's great. I just want to, again, stay involved in the conversation. The town will want to stay involved in the conversation. I think that site across from the post office came out as very highly regarded, from towers to visibility and access onto a state road. And I would suggest that we continue to look at that path as well.
And if I could just add something, Nancy, as a reminder?
Yep.
Jones and Beach already cited a building on the property across from Haniford, so there was already conceptual on that. So now for the voters, I mean, there's actually now will be two.
Right. Okay, thanks. Thanks, Chief. All right, Suckman's regular meeting schedule for November and December. We have a few pesky holidays in there. But recommending for November, I'll throw this out, meeting November tenth and November seventeenth. And then we have the pass for the Thanksgiving. And then we have the pass for the Thanksgiving. December, December 8th and the 22nd. Does that work?
I'd sure like to avoid the 22nd, but, so, the day before the office shuts down and so on. Could we compromise on December and just, if we have one meeting, have it on the 15th, in the middle of the month?
It's fine with me.
I understand, you're, the second, fourth thing, but 20 seconds awfully close to Christmas Eve for me.
It's fine with me to just have December 15th.
Okay, great.
All right.
By that point, also, the Budget Committee will have had three meetings, four meetings, so we should have a pretty good idea of what's happening there.
Right.
In terms of reconciliation and so on.
Okay. All right, Town Administrators report?
We have started the interviews for the full-time rec director. We had one interview today, we'll have two tomorrow, and hopefully two next week. So hopefully we'll have more to bring back to the board next week. I was contacted by the owners of the Beulie property today, they have reviewed the purchase and sale that Town Council prepared, and they have sent back some changes they'd like to recommend. I think the biggest change is they would like to remove the stipulation of the appraisal coming in at $600,000. So you'll wanna be thinking about that. I have sent it to Town Council. It's not really unusual that they would come back, it's a pretty lengthy document, I don't think it's really anything too important at this point. But we'll see what Town Council says, and hopefully next week, if we can set the tax rate next week, we might be able to bring this up and see if you're in favor of the recommended changes. So that's all I have.
Okay. Meeting meetings and reports?
I've just already told you at the Energy Committee last night, and we also had another Waste Committee meeting, and the composting project is off and running.
Meeting minutes, approved meeting minutes of October 27th?
Yeah, I don't think I, I don't, they're not ready yet, are they? Do you have them, 27th?
I don't.
Okay, no, I'll have to pass over those.
Okay. And then we have the litany of the upcoming meetings, our next regular, Sleckman's meeting is next Thursday. Any other business? Okay, I, the only time I can't be there is between 3:30 and 5:30. Otherwise, I can be there whenever.
I'll take the last one then, and then you can have the middle?
Sure.
Okay. And Nancy, could we have a discussion at the next meeting about what's happening with the furniture for this...
Yes.
Room?
Yes, we'll do an update.
Great, thanks.
Okay, and we need a...
Yep, and after you do, or before you do the, your vouchers and things, I'd like to request that you go into non-public session under RSA 91A colon 32A, an employee issue.
Okay. So move seconds?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all.